Welcome, everyone, to our workshop on November 28th, 2022. Ms. Rush, if you could do the roll call. Here? Here? Here?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Williams from tonight's workshop.
Motion to excuse Mayor Williams. All votes are cast, and that passes six to zero with Mayor Williams being absent. And he let us know that he would be gone prior to this, so we wish him well. Again, thank you for being here, everyone. We've got one workshop tonight, so Ms. Gillis, I'll turn it to you.
And I'm going to hand it over to Jacquetton Rhodes, our Public Works Director, to present on the pavement program for 2022 results.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, everyone. Thank you for the time to have me speak to you tonight on our 2022 pavement program results. I'm going to provide a very brief background and then turn it over to the team to provide our annual report to you on what we were able to accomplish in 2022, talk a little bit about what's planned for 2023, and the overall tenure program plan status, and seek some feedback from you and some of the challenges we see and what we're proposing as next steps. Wanted to start with, of course, alignment with the strategic plan. There's two key principles of the infrastructure work system that we align with here, and I wanted to highlight some of our strategic results. Strategic result one, related to the street maintenance master plan. You're going to hear a little bit more about this on our December 12th workshop, where we'll go into more detail as to the status of that. But there's a key element in terms of the streets' maintenance master plan that has already been completed, and that is a technical memorandum that folds into that plan that is related to our pavement program and operations. So this team has already been implementing some of those recommendations, and they'll talk a little bit about that tonight. And of course, we're providing our annual update to you. Strategic result four talks a little bit about the financial options for eliminating the streets' maintenance deficit. And this team has made progress towards that goal. A few of the milestones to highlight here include some of the policy and direction that were provided in terms of addressing ADA needs as part of this program. We've completed and updated or adopted the engineering code of standards. And what is coming up next, and what we'll talk to you about tonight in terms of next steps, is the business case for dedicated streets' maintenance funding. Very high-level overview. I don't need to tell you that this is one of our one of our most extensive assets to maintain in the city. And really, it goes beyond just asphalt maintenance. As you're aware, the concrete components of this project are of this program are very capital-intensive as we look to address ADA needs. The pavement quality index is what council has set for this team in terms of a measure for us to reach. And we'll talk a little bit about more about that. But PQI, as we call it, of 70 is our goal. And at our current funding levels, you hear us talk about this tonight, we're actually projected to slightly decrease every year because of the intensive needs of this program. I wanted to start by acknowledging the team and everybody here who's here to speak to you tonight, as well as the other contributors to this program. Our pavement manager, Jeff Nelson, will speak tonight. We have pavement coordinators Christine Biddle and then a thank you to council for approving our 2023 position for another pavement coordinator hire. Our municipal inspections team, we have Rob Iafredi here, who'll speak to you tonight, as well as some of our other key inspectors assigned to the program. And again, we'll be resourcing another inspector to this program next year. ADA coordinator Anne Foster is here this evening. Our infrastructure communications manager Katie Patterson, streets manager Keith Bohan, and of course, our planning, engineering, traffic, GIS teams. We have a list of 2022 contractors that we worked with this year. And I wanted to highlight this because the program has grown substantially. We'll talk about this through our program history. But we've been able to fully spend out our funds and manage multiple contractors to reach our goals. Just a brief snapshot on the last five years of history. Of course, we could go further back with this, but the program has grown significantly. What's shown in this slide, at least starting in 2017, in the green line is our total budget. And this includes both the annual program budget, as well as any one-time funds that council provides. And then anything that we're not able to spend out in that program year gets carried over and completed in the next program year. So that's reflected in the green line. And the stacked bars on this chart are what we spent. And we broke this out into concrete and asphalt just to highlight the significant concrete replacement needs. And part of this also helps us address our ADA transition plan goals. But in the blue bar, that's smaller but growing over time, are what we're calling a general category of operations. So this is both maintenance of our Road Matrix model, some consultant work helping us planning, as well as the positions that we fund through those funds as well. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our team to actually present to you on our results.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Nelson. I'm the pavement manager. So this slide is a map of our 2022 pavement maintenance projects. As you can see, we tried to spread out and do some different treatments: mill and overlay, hot chip, crack seal, slurry. And you can see the wider light blue lines that represents all the ADA-compliant ramps that we completed. This is a list of some of our bigger and more expensive mill and overlay projects. In addition to this, some of our other extensive projects were a hot chip project on 86 Parkway. And we did some slurry projects in Five Parks and Spring Mesa. So with the this is the 2022 network results with the projects that were completed in 2022. It did bring our PCI up a little bit, so we're sitting now at a 39.8. This map represents this is the STAN Tech. This is what comes out of Road Matrix. So this represents the quality of our streets at this current moment. So black are failed streets. As the colors go on in the legend, the orange is fair and the green are the good streets. So we're trying to improve as we can with our allocated budget. These photos just represent some of our different treatments. Obviously, we try to do a lot of crack seal, everything we can to keep our good streets good. As you move over to the right, that was the 86 Parkway hot chip project. As you go down to the left, that was Ralston Gap SMA. That's a different mix design we use in higher-traffic areas. It's more expensive, but it lasts longer, and it's a lot more durable to intersections and higher-traffic areas. As you move over to the slurry seal, that picture is just a good representation of why it's important to first crack seal and patch before we do all these surface treatments. So we're doing the job the right way. And then obviously, that's our two-inch mill and overlay process. That was on Sim Street. So this is a budget breakdown of 2022. This was with a budget going back to that map. The work that was accomplished, this was with close to a $16 million budget. You can see we spent a lot of money on mill and overlay. We tried to divvy it up, once again, to keep the good streets good with some surface treatments. The most important number that I want to point out here is the $7 million we spent. That was half of our budget on ADA-compliant ramps. When you see a $16 million budget, it's just important to know that doesn't just go towards repairing streets. We're having to also divvy some of that money into ADA compliance.
Mr. Marriott, you have a question?
Jeff, I've got a question for you on that subject exactly. Was that ADA ramp work all in areas, you know, a year or two ahead of when we're going to do streets work there anyway? Or are we actually out going out doing ADA concrete in areas that aren't on the least reasonably near-future plan of doing pavement work?
So for this year, we pretty much only did ramps. And it was to catch up with ramps that were done previously that were compliant at the time. But with the new ADA compliance, they didn't meet it, and we kind of had to redo some areas. The plan, the ultimate plan to stay ahead of the game is to be two years out ahead. It won't be the norm to do, you know, pushing 1,000 ramps a year. We'll get back to doing full neighborhood concrete replacement. That number will come down considerably, but...
Okay, so that $7 million this year is a bit of an anomaly. The plan wouldn't always be to be that.
No, especially, yeah, in my planning, I would prefer to have that number be down at $3 to $4 million to be able to allocate more of that money towards actual asphalt repair. This should be an asphalt maintenance program.
Okay, and we're doing the ADA ramps as we do the street work. We're not just going out trying to catch all the other than this year where we're catching up. We're not just randomly doing ADA ramps by themselves with no other work around them.
This year, so a lot of the neighborhoods we worked in, the rest of the concrete had already been done, and we had to go back and make the ramps compliant.
Right, okay.
But moving forward, we'll be back to whole-neighborhood concrete replacement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just a comment on that. Yeah, I actually had several phone calls and emails about that, you know, saying, hey, we just had this done, why are we doing it again? And trying to explain to them that bringing it up to compliance. So if we get into a situation where we're going back, it would be great to have that communication so that we can more quickly respond to the fact that, yeah, it's we did, we get it, but it didn't meet the ADA requirements, so...
Yes, we so between myself and Christine, the coordinator, and our inspection team, we were fielding numerous complaints about that all year long. And I mean, we took quite a beating over it.
Yeah, no, and thank you for taking the beating, but thank you for also doing the work.
If you, as council, ever need assistance with answering those questions, just feel free to reach out to us, and we can help you through that.
Thank you, and I think we will.
Yes.
We always do, so thank you. Any other, okay, go ahead and keep going.
So this is a map of our 2023 proposed treatments. Once again, we're going to we'll try to mix up the treatments and have a we'd like to have a good mix of not just mill and overlay, which, you know, we're in a critical place where that's what a lot of our neighborhoods need because they just haven't had any treatments over the years. But we are still trying to mix up with these surface treatments, which will keep our good streets good with our, you know, with our crack seals, our hot chips, our slurries. We're trying to have a good mix. And this map will actually have it'll probably get a little bit more concrete added to it, as well as some more crack seal treats. But for the most part, this is our 2023 plan. So with the 2023 allocated funds, this year, our budget is right around $12 million. And as we just talked about, we'll try to allocate around $7 million towards asphalt maintenance, $4 million towards concrete and ADA. We want to also try to do a test pilot street. That's what this funding for a test pilot. We have a lot of sidewalks, noncompliant, narrow sidewalks throughout the city in the older neighborhoods. So we're going to do a test pilot street to show the challenges and the costs of what that's going to look like over a whole neighborhood. So we're just going to do like a block, maybe a one-block section, to show there's so many challenges with you know, we and Chris is going to get into this later, more in-depth in this presentation. But there's a lot to look at as far as, do we narrow the streets? Or do we acquire right-of-way and, you know, move into people's property? But there's just a lot to look at with moving water meters, fire hydrants, landscaping. If you narrow streets, does it take away parking? There's a lot of challenges. And we have a lot of narrow, noncompliant sidewalk in the city. So then we also have our operating costs. We do get additional funding for HUTF projects. It's approximately $450,000 per year. It does carry over. Like last year, we just didn't get a project on the books. This year, we would like to do SMA projects, which would be Ralston Road from 58th Avenue over to Allendale. Like I say, we get that funding. Last year's will carry over, so that's additional funding that we want to make sure we're taking advantage of moving forward. So with the 2023 allocated funds, our projected PQI will be at a 38.8, which actually went down, will go down a little bit. So this graph right here just kind of shows if our budget stays where it is at around $10 to $12 million per year, that's been the norm where this budget has been for the program, our PQI is actually going to go down. If we were to in my opinion, if we were to gradually increase our budget closer to that $15 million range, I feel we could allocate around $5 million to the concrete program and actually allocate that $10 million towards improving our streets. And that would at least stabilize I feel at $15 million, we would kind of stabilize that line instead of decreasing and possibly, you know, with gradual increases over the years, I think we can get our PQI to start going up and try to get where we want to be.
Mr. Pfeiffer has a question.
So I would call it sensitivities in your graph. Do you have a graph that shows what those dollar amounts would do to this?
So these are projections that come out of our Road Matrix program. And this is the only graph that I have for this presentation. This whole presentation, I guess, could open the can of worms and lead to further talk and further presentations, but...
I would make sure that this graph shows the different funding amounts would do what to that line?
Yeah, and that's...
You should, if you because here, you're just saying you're okay with $12 million, $10 million. You should be coming in with $15, $20, $25 million, and show me what it does. You're selling yourself short on this graph.
And my point is, we need to just gradually increase that, maybe by $5 million per year.
But I'd like to see the moving of the needle.
Yeah.
You saying it sounds great.
Yeah.
You have a great voice. But data is what's going to drive decisions.
Yes.
So if you could put it into a graph, it'll help us inform when we get to the one-time funds and we get to other discussion points. It will help us inform us where we want to adjust the dials to move the PQI on this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so maybe you could put in the weekly memo an updated graph with those increments of fives and see what it does to this number. Because, I mean, if our goal is 70, how do we get there? You should show me a graph of what it takes. Because you go out to 2037. So what would it take to get to a 70 PQI or higher?
Yeah.
What year do you achieve it? And what is the funding you would need to get there?
Yeah, and it's there's a lot of factors that play into it. As right now, there's we're such a small program. Everything has to grow to get us there. The program has to grow. We have to be able to depend on contractors being able to take on that much more work. There's a lot.
When I first came on, it was only $3 million going into the event. So to us, this is a great improvement, but it's not enough.
Yeah.
$10 million is still not enough, but
No.
Let's sell the story of what you really need to get there. So we have a target to go after.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I have other questions on the other slides, too. But do you want me to wait to the end? Okay, she's saying yes, so I'm going to take your boss's lead.
Do them now.
I meant to say that my introduction, that the reflection we wanted, we hope answered for you.
You're the only show tonight playing, and I bought tickets.
There's more in the upcoming slides that may answer.
I'll just keep writing notes down.
If you want to come back to me if they're not answered, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay.
And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris. Or Rob, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Rob Iafredi. I'm a municipal inspector with the city, along with Matt Grandy and Fabian Ruiziz, who was also assigned to this project over the summer. We did have two full-time concrete contractors this summer, so required two full-time inspectors assigned to those contractors throughout the summer. I think one of the biggest advancements we had in 2022 was the implementation of a Survey 123 app that was a hugely collaborative effort between our GIS, pavement management, inspections team, everybody, to have a one-stop digital platform where we can keep track of all this progress with ADA, know what we have compliant in the city, and be able to show that actually to the public and show our progress year over year. It also keeps track of all of our ADA ramp inspections, not just on these streets programs, but any CIP development, streets, CDOT as well. We can go out and inspect these ramps and keep track of them moving forward. It also allows for documentation of any of our MEFs, or what we call maximum extent feasibles. When we can't make a ramp compliant due to fire hydrants, utility poles in the way, inlets, it also helps us document those. It also provides us and every department with dashboard metrics so that we can see where our progress is. How do we do this summer with two contractors, things of that nature? And again, it shares the key milestones with the public. The app, just to briefly kind of go over, very easy to use. We can use it on our phones, our iPads, our laptops, computers, anything. And we can update this as we go. And it will keep track of what road we're on, who the inspector was, the project number assigned to that ramp, who was the contractor on that ramp, and then starts taking more metrics into account. It actually lets us also document a picture of the ramp when it's complete so that we can show that as well. This map is great. This slide is great because it shows that this summer, we did complete roughly 980 ramps, which is ballpark around 9% of the out-of-compliant ramps that we have in the city. So it was a monumental effort this summer. Some of the challenges that we face day in and day out is right-of-way issues, which are, you can see in the upper-left picture, people installing walls that are right up against our sidewalks or actually on top of our sidewalks, fences that need to be moved, landscaping in certain neighborhoods. And on the bottom-right picture, you can see this ramp, we had to work it around a fire hydrant and a utility pole as well. Some of the biggest challenges that go along with this is just homeowner communication, where we really step out of the inspector role and become more of a project manager throughout this process, trying to stay ahead of the contractors who are moving at breakneck speeds, to educate, hey, we're going to be on your block in the next couple of weeks doing this. We have some issues we need to address with you and handle them accordingly. Utility adjustments are probably one of the biggest time consumers when we come across inlets, poles that we have to work around, get engineering involved to develop a plan to work around that MEF for us. These provide extra cost and delays for us when it comes to removing these walls and fences, where to not slow progress down, we talk with the homeowners at that point and have the contractor do it, and it comes out of our funding. I think there was a slide mixed. So with that being said, too, redoing the ramps that we spoke earlier of some of the ramps that were compliant two or three years ago that are no longer compliant, I think that's where we really showed an increase in the number of complaints. It was really getting out there and educating them why are we doing this ahead of the paving? Why we have to redo the ramps again? That was our number-one complaint all summer long, was just that, hey, we're out there spending money on this again when they've seen it two years ago. And so I think this summer was a great challenge for us, but we learned a lot. Towards the end of the year, we were really starting to kind of mitigate a lot of these complaints by presenting that more information, handing out letters from us saying, we're with you the whole time in this neighborhood. If you have any complaints, concerns, questions, just come to the inspector, and we will take care of it for you, which really dramatically started reducing it as we went through the summer. With that, I will hand off to Chris.
Good evening, councilmembers. Most of the party here today has already discussed what we've accomplished in the past, but I'd like to pivot just a bit to the future. In addition, obviously, executing on the 2022 plan, the team was hard at work at creating a draft for our first-ever written pavement plan. This is intended to outline goals, roles and responsibilities, coordination expectations both internally with multiple departments, programs, and even outside public agencies and private companies such as utilities. It's intended to dictate and suggest the means and methods. That's not to say that we're locked in and not able to experiment with other new ideas in the market, but it shows all the different treatments that we have and what we can accomplish. We are looking forward to, in the beginning of next year, really formulating directives, policies, and procedures based off of some of the input we receive hopefully here tonight, if not in follow-up meetings. This is obviously intended to be a living document that has a one, three, five, and 10-year plan so that we can really look to the future to see what we're accomplishing, as well as putting costs to that. And last but not least, this document is intended to fulfill the goal, or excuse me, the strategic result of assessing funding scenarios to achieve your results. The backbone of those plans and that financial scenario planning is a software known as Road Matrix. I think that's been presented here a couple of times historically. But we did want to highlight what it does and what it doesn't do that is creating a little bit more work on the back end now that we've done a substantial work with Road Matrix. Road Matrix is a software program that's intended for asphalt-only. It obviously reads out our current state of the network, as well as projected states. It tells us where to go and what work is suggested, given the condition of the asphalt, and helps us with planning out scenarios for funding requirements to reach PQI. Here at the bottom of the slide, there's a sampling of different outputs, whether it be a map or a dashboard or databases. Now, I did want to cover just briefly what Road Matrix does not do. It does output a suggested treatment and locations. But being a program, a software program, it, by default, spits out different treatments scattered throughout the city. You can imagine of milling overlaying, say, 300, 400 feet at a time on 86, and then bouncing down to do a similar segment on 72, and then doing half of a neighborhood is not entirely efficient from a mobilization and traffic control perspective. So it does still take the human touch on the output of the software to really formulate a plan. Jeff has been working on that recently and has been doing that human-touch element that I outlined for the three- and five-year plan, but that's still a work in progress as part of the program plan. The other element, and this will be more relevant as we go through the remainder of the slides, is concrete estimating and analysis. This software program does not do that. So with that, we do have some preliminary graphs here. But I wanted to broach the subject over the remainder of this PowerPoint to receive input. Obviously, I want to inform, but we'd like to hear feedback on what your initial thoughts are on some of the work that we have accomplished and some of the scenarios we're seeing for the future. Now, we all want to get to a condition where we have fantastic streets, PQI 70, bracketing kind of that realm of fair-to-good streets. And we have two approaches that come to mind for us, an incremental approach or a substantial increase in funding in the short term. To get to a PQI of 70, we'd be looking at about a six-fold increase in our asphalt budget alone over the next 10 years. Per year, excuse me, per year. In 10 years, we'd be spending about six times what we are now. Again, these numbers I have not brought forward today because we are still working on that human-touch element of it. We don't want to bring forth overly optimized or overly optimistic numbers. But the other scenario that we favor a little bit more is an incremental funding increase over years in the future. We obviously want to understand that and we do understand that City Council has been putting forth money and prioritizing other efforts. So we want to be cognizant of that. And we all want to get to a PQI of 70 as soon as possible, but we want to do it in a responsible way so that we don't overload the resources, such as those that we've added to the program recently, as well as the industry as a whole. Through our initial work on PQI, we have noted that the information that's been brought forth previously communicated around the strategic result that at around $15 million of asphalt spending is where the system begins to stabilize. And from that point forward, we can start to build and improve on our PQI. We'd also like to implement what we call a committed neighborhoods concept. Historically, the program, like all other pavement programs, has had the philosophy of keep good roads good. Obviously, our maintenance costs for roads like that is substantially lower than having to go in and fully reconstruct. Historically, we focused on arterials and collectors and neighborhoods and residential streets to a certain extent. But many of the neighborhoods, as we all know, have really begun to fall apart. So every year, we would like to go into a neighborhood and reconstruct those streets. They are far gone from having any noticeable effect from a crack seal or a milling overlay perspective. As you can imagine, some of what we call the alligator cracking in the streets, if we go in and mill and overlay that, it's just a matter of time before those cracks start to come through if the existing asphalt even holds up to that initial mill. Now, the next items I'm going to get into are sensitive and technically complex to a certain degree, funny enough. But, you know, we've talked about ADA here so far. And historically, we've been, you know, revising and rebuilding curb ramps to be ADA-compliant per federal mandate. But directive... per federal mandate. But a directive came down from our Director of Public Works last year, that any program or project within the city really needs to evaluate and look at adjacent ADA improvements that are possible, you know, while we're there. Let's make as good a product as we possibly can. So with that, we would like to progress and need to progress beyond just curb ramps and start dealing with the other ADA compliance issues along the street. We have that desire, both as a team, but we also feel like it's the best opportunity, given that this program touches more of the city every year than possibly any other program. Along the same vein is the ADA curb ramps kind of being point compliance issues. We also have a large amount of driveway cuts, we call them, here within the city. In the upper picture, in existing, it's slightly difficult to see from this perspective, but there is a driveway curb cut, as we call it, present there. You'll see a lot of those if you go for a walk outside of City Council east of here, basically where the sidewalk has been constructed to the point where the back of sidewalk is held, but the front of sidewalk drops down to gutter level or street level. And that creates like a ten or twelve percent cross slope, far in excess of the two percent that ADA requires. You can imagine that for a wheelchair or stroller, this can be a headache, if not a nightmare. As a wheelchair individual, I imagine that twelve percent creates a tipping hazard, if not rolls you right out on the street. Just imagine magnifying this twelve or eighteen times down a street or so. So we have three different fixes for this. This first one here is the one that we are recommending, is the mountable curb solution. It would basically, we would remove and replace the driveway cut with standard mountable curb and gutter. That's why it's mountable. It's consistent with modern practices from about the eighties or so, where it became commonplace. It would, of course, be less comfortable for ingress and egress of the vehicles, but it would provide high pedestrian comfort, make us ADA compliant, of course. It would have low impact on the private property surrounding it, and would avoid any, if not most, well, not really any, right-of-way negotiations, both in schedule, complexity, and cost. Another alternative we have is to drop the whole sidewalk four inches or so. So if you can imagine as a pedestrian, you have about a six-foot ramp, not too dissimilar from an ADA ramp, where you drop down four inches and then come back up. It would provide similar comfort for the vehicles that are coming and going at those homes, but lower pedestrian comfort. One driveway, not so much, but again, if you start to picture you're walking down a street and there's twelve or eighteen of them, not exactly ideal. It would have higher impact on driveways and private property. You can see in the gray shading here shown as driveway, this would be our anticipated footprint of construction. If we dropped the back sidewalk four inches, then we're probably replacing about ten-foot of driveway there, and adjacent asphalt, and curb. And you know, this is just intended to be representative, so every home would obviously be different. We start to get into temporary right-of-way needs. Higher construction costs, we're guestimating this example compared to the last, is probably two times as expensive. And last but not least, you can note where the property line is here. These improvements are starting to reach out into the frontage of the other home. Our third alternative would be a sidewalk behind the curb cut. Again, similar comfort for the vehicle coming and going, moderate pedestrian comfort, but we're starting to really start to impact much more property, get into higher construction costs. I know it doesn't show this way, but we would guesstimate this would be three times what installing mountable curb and gutter would be. And last but not least, we need to pursue either an easement or permanent right-of-way here to provide access for pedestrians across what is currently private property. Moving from point concerns, in this case, to more linear ones. Through the transition plan, about ninety percent of our sidewalks were found to be non-compliant. Width is primarily the concern here and the issue here. Throughout a lot of the city, we have thirty-inch sidewalk, where according to ADA, we need at least thirty-six, if not pro-wag, forty-eight. So we really have two options. Come in, or go out. I want to highlight first, expanding out. If these conditions are encountered, where we can't go into the street, we would propose that this work not be completed as part of this project, but become a CIP project for the reasons here listed. Not only time and cost of right-of-way are incredibly difficult to predict, not to mention would slow the program down, the impact to the water meters and lines. If we were to, say, come across a neighborhood, which is quite common, have water meters right on the back of sidewalk, we would need to relocate those eighteen inches, two feet back. If we, that would suggest that per the water department, we're replacing the entire service line up to the meter. If we were not to do that, we could be introducing hundreds, if not thousands, of weak points within the system if we were to, say, just cold patch it there from pipe to pipe. We're obviously starting to get into private property quite a bit. Driveway reconstruction, again, if you envision the end of your sidewalk coming out two more feet, and you have a substantial grade, you know, some driveways are flat, non-issue, but if, say, you have a steep driveway, we may have to go in and reconstruct an entire driveway at the expense of the program. So narrow streets comes with its host of issues there. We obviously need to ensure fire lane width. Safety is of the utmost importance, but we also acknowledge that this could affect on-street parking and bike lanes, and that careful coordination with our M P I, our Mobility Parking and Innovations Group, would be really important on factors like this. And there would be some storms to our improvements that would be needed. We feel as though in certain cases, narrowing the street is a feasible option to pursue, to again, do our part in addressing ADA deficiencies throughout the city. One other issue we wanted to highlight and get input from council on was private property and right-of-way. As Rob highlighted just slightly, as our work on corners for curb ramps have affected private property, it ranges from lawns to retaining walls. Historically, the program has covered that cost, but our city ordinance and in discussions with the city's attorney office, that really is not the way to go. That citizens, or permities, or other agencies that have put their own property within city right-of-way are really expected to relocate that at their cost. So we would like to pivot to more of that model. While on curb ramps at corners, the costs have been minimal to the program, should we, say, end up going down the path of expanding out for this infrastructure, you can really envision the sheer amount of impact we would have on citizens' property that has drifted out into the right-of-way throughout the years. In conclusion, we've made a lot of headway with the adoption of Road Matrix. We're learning more and more every few months and implementing more tools that are available to us within that program. We've got a really new team here that's fantastic, and they're implementing new ideas and testing them and implementing. As Jeff had mentioned, we want to do a bit of a test street on that narrowing of the street for sidewalks. I think that's a great example of how we're putting our big toe in before we jump in headfirst to some of these changes. The team has been really excellent out in the field in communicating with citizens, but we're always seeking to get better. We're working with Katie, our communications official here in our Department of Public Works, to sharpen the pencil and always get better at that. And that ADA requirements are affecting the program. We envision that we want to take on more. We feel like it's a real opportunity, but that, of course, will come with its own host of issues that we've just briefly highlighted here. We would love your feedback on some of those items that I've discussed. Now, I know I've thrown a lot at you. If we want to do a study session or another workshop to really dive into the details and go down the rabbit hole on some of these items, that's more than an invited. And all of you know, more funding is needed to reach the program goals. And with that, over the next year, we intend to make progress on that. We'd really like to make some decisions around the commitments to ADA and the direction we go, so that we can finalize our directives and policies on those matters, start, and of course, a lot of these items overlap, but start to have some of the engineering team working on cost estimating of what the true picture is for some of this substantial concrete work. We'd like to return to workshop, both the final plan and the business case, those scenarios that Mr. Pfeiffer was discussing, followed up by a workshop with funding options, and towards the end of next year, really kind of finalizing those recommended funding plans. Obviously, that would require the help of other individuals like the attorney's office and the finance group. All along the way, we'll of course be committing and completing the 2023 program as presented. Over the next month, Jeff and the team will be working on final coordination, internal and external, on that plan to get that final, get it out to bid, award, and begin construction in March-ish time. And as you all well know, it's a year-round program. We'd end construction as weather dictates, kind of towards the end of next year, probably this time-ish. With that, that's all we have for you, besides answers, I hope.
Mr. Pfeiffer, you want to lead us off?
Sure. Can I spitball all over the place with you?
Let's do it.
All right.
A slide number would be helpful.
Let's start with the first, like, two slides, where it shows your money breakdown on the bar graph.
Oh, mine, okay.
Keep going. So it's like page two or three. No, 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 I want to go all the way.
I'll be back, okay.
Six. Yeah, that's a good one. So it's always my impression that the money we put towards pavement and concrete has always been to capital improvement. So operating kind of threw me a little bit that you put operating within the budgets here. Am I misunderstanding that? Because every dollar should be going to capital improvement, not operating.
Well, we have three different accounts set up for this, concrete, asphalt, and operating. So we did not mean to money the waters here. In future presentations, we could, of course, drop the operation side of it off, but...
Probably need to, just because I think we're intended that every dollar goes to actual assets, right? And the people part of it, maybe keep it separate?
Yeah.
I mean, there's always going to be a people component of it, but when you say there's fifteen point six seven million going towards it, it's not quite accurate and it could be misunderstood. So I would really like to keep the operating expense known, but outside of dollar-for-dollar asset management. I think it just makes more sense to show every dollar is going to the asset.
Yes, sir.
There's always indirect costs, right?
Of course.
There's always going to be indirect costs. So go to the next screen. I might, let's go one more. I'm going to keep going. One more. One more. It's one of the maps. Okay, this one. So a couple of things. One, if you go to the map earlier, which you don't need to, man, the P Q I on streets that are in the new parts of our city are already in disrepair, according to your analysis. So it begs for me to start thinking about warranty and what are these developers doing when they're building these roads, and then what inspection levels are we doing? Because, you know, obviously, I live in a newer area, and so does Mr. Jones, but they're also in disrepair. Plus, this one here shows that you're doing a milling overlay, no, crack seal on almost all of Candellas. And the area far left of it is not even three years old. Is it typical that we do crack seal within three years?
Now, I'm going to use a wide range here because it does vary a bit, but crack seal is a typical treatment for somewhere between that three to seven.
So you're doing a crack seal. So we're already seeing the cracking happening in these roads?
Yeah, which again, three to seven year range.
Okay.
It is worth noting because it's a slight adjacent fact, but while our P Q I at times is not showing very well, our ride quality is above the P Q I number. So as you mentioned, you haven't quite noticed. Often, our roads are in decent enough shape that as you drive down them, they're comfortable and...
Yeah, they're smooth.
Yeah.
Other than Candellas Parkway, but yeah.
Yeah.
And I know why we're waiting on that one. We'll wait till all the construction's done. Don't even touch that thing until you're ready for all the big trucks to be off of it.
The trucks, yeah.
Okay, so that kind of answers that question. I just want to make sure that I stress the importance, and I know you guys all get it, but really, we need to stress the importance that when developers are building our roads, we really, really, really need to hold them accountable. I think we have an escrow now on these, or in the past, we didn't, if I get that, if I remember that right. Because we didn't always have escrows on these developers, right?
That's correct. We've changed the way that we're holding escrow on new developments. We also have some new language in our new standards and specs that will hold developers to a little tighter policy on that. If their road doesn't meet the twenty-year pavement life expectations, then they have to mill and overlay that before they hand it over to us, or provide additional treatments as necessary. And for example, one thing that we've seen is a lot of home builders are not necessarily done building the homes when the roads turn over to us. So we're asking for more substantial funding and/or work by the developers in order to fix those roads after the homes are built. Because as you know, a lot of the damage happens during construction of the home.
Right. And we shouldn't accept that asset until the last home is built, in my eyes. So maybe we can look at that a little bit more. I think what stresses me out is knowing the plethora of all the troubles we're having around these assets, and yet, looking around and seeing these developers kind of just adding to the pile of problems, it really worries me. So any way we can close those gaps and hold them more accountable and more inspections, and don't let them get away with anything that they've committed to, that just helps us because it does hurt to see if we go in somewhere soon after, and it's like, darn, they just ended up a warranty, and now we're doing a milling overlay because we didn't realize that there was a problem there. So just keep your eye on that ball. Then driveways. So let's go to your driveways. So here's a problem with driveways. So I lived on Eighty-Fourth and Benton, and I called the city back in 2006, 2007, and I asked for the dipped driveway, and the city said, yes, you can have it. You just paid fifty percent. So now, I lived on the corner of Benton and Eighty-Fourth. If you guys want to go and see, that concrete's still there. It was a great job, but I paid fifty percent of that entire corner house, and the city's the one who put in the dip for my driveway. So just be aware that some of those citizens are going to be furious with you when they thought that they paid fifty percent to have that dip there as well.
Yeah.
So I think we're going to have a harder problem to deal with here, and we've just got to figure out. Now granted, we might just have to eat all our costs and make the curb right, and just go to a new standard and get it, but we need to be fully aware of longevity of citizens that have, like me, that would have known that I personally paid, you know, probably like three grand for that concrete work.
We are going in eyes wide open.
Yeah.
Not, it's not that we really enjoy this or really want to do this from that perspective, but from doing what's right for our pedestrian community and being ADA compliant.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to understand your approach and your strategy around that kind of discussion. I mean, you're hearing a voice of a persona that's telling you what you're going to run across. I'd like to know what your answers would be back. So maybe you can put that there. Because I think that's going to be your biggest challenge in the older neighborhoods, where people did come and reinvest, and part of the reinvestment was improving the sidewalk and contributing in the fifty-fifty program. I think you're going to have some problems around that. But I appreciate the diversity in this idea. You're being creative. I just wish we could have just said, look, we'll give you the current sidewalk, we'll take it out, you can have that, and we'll put it detached further into your yard. Because then driveway's not even a discussion, because the driveway's away from the sidewalk.
Yeah. Just to paint the map, from a numbers perspective and pulling records of the last decade, we've approved ninety-four permits.
For that dip?
For these driveway cuts, yeah. So about ten a year. This is very anecdotal, but driving throughout the city, I feel like I see a lot compared to thinking that we've only had ten years per year for the last sixty years.
Yeah. I think, I'll tell you, my recollection of my conversation with the city at the time, like I said, is oh-six, oh-seven. Actually, no, it's probably longer than that. It was probably oh-four, oh-five. It was like an option. You know, hey, you signed up, yes, your concrete needs to be redone. Do you want that? You pay a little extra, but, so, you know, it's a sins of the past, right? I mean, we're just dealing with that. Just be aware of that conversation. And then the last, we showed the street, the street itself right here. It would be nice if the methods that we come up with, because one of the things we're dealing with right now in this conversation is, all of the changes over every five years, we make a different decision about how sidewalks are done, how driveways are done, you know, and so each neighborhood gets different, different, different. In fact, as you may or may not know, but the ADA ramps in Candellas have that curb that you can trip and roll your ankle on, on every corner. It dips with a curb, and the sidewalk's above the curb. So I could send you pictures.
I might need to see a picture. I'm a picture guy.
But it's not marked or anything, but every corner has those. And that's not even five years old. So what we need to do is get with a direction, and I know federal laws influence it, but we need to get with a direction and stay with it as long as possible because we continuously deal with this, and it becomes more and more expensive, and it takes money away from other programs that we need to focus on. So where I'm going with this picture is, when we go through this, we really need to do a full planning of every road and the entire area that we're looking at widening these sidewalks, because it needs to be done eventually. It might take twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, I don't know, but we need to have a plan that shows what is our method for that side of the street on that block, so that somebody can look at that and say, okay, they're going to need some in my yard, or they're not, or what can they plan for, or just getting awareness of the effort and the level of effort it's going to take to do this. Because some of the streets, yeah, you can cut into the street, especially in Far Horizons where I was for most of the time. Some of those roads are super wide.
Yeah.
Those are great, but then there's some, like, I'm thinking of Marriott's area, there is no way that you can even think of cutting into the street.
Yeah.
You know, in the Old Town area and so forth. So we need to get there, just, we really need to look unfortunately at every house and every block and get it all on a plan.
If I could jump in here, definitely hear you, but one of the other things we were contending with was that the ADA If I could jump in here, um, definitely hear you, but one of the other things we were contending with was that the ADA did change, and it changed after the Candellas construction, so we're dealing with that as well. But exactly what you're suggesting is exactly what they're doing as far as the plans and setting the standards that we're gonna follow through on. And one more reminder, one size won't fit all, so there will be neighborhoods where, where you'll see something that won't work somewhere else.
Well, I can tell you, some neighborhoods are not gonna want even a sidewalk. I could name probably, like Rainbow Ridge, I'm sure they don't want one. I'm sure over by Sierra Elementary, they don't want a sidewalk. I could probably name, so we might not even have sidewalks in some neighborhoods, right? Are we gonna enforce that?
Well, we're moving towards ADA standards, so it will depend on the plan as we go forward, so that's, that's available. But what, what you're getting here tonight is the consistency that we need in, in moving forward. And as you raised, that dip in the driveway, since I've been here, we've been out looking at those driveways probably every other year because it is so challenging, and this team has brought forward a plan to address that.
I feel bad that I put one in. But yeah, let's, but let's, let's, I get that you're trying to address the ADA, I totally understand what you're saying. Let's just, I guess where I'm trying to go is, let's not put bad money, let's do it as best as we can the first time, and you can never predict it. But like, some of these things, like, like I'll tell you, the Candella situation, those were no does. We should never have had a, a, a sidewalk on top of a curb that goes to ramps on the side, and I'll send you the picture, I'll send council the picture. But they're everywhere, and, and that was just, that should just be a plain out. To me, it was, the developer did the minimum it needed to do to check the checkbox, and there was no forethought that this was not a tripping hazard, a wheelchair could roll over, a person could roll their ankle. It was very obvious that it was a health issue in my eyes, but we allowed it. And so, if there's ways we can predict, like, make our own ordinances maybe a little bit more, um, forward-leaning, so we don't have a redo as much, that would be awesome, and I know it's a crystal ball ask, but I don't know why we can't.
I think one example in which we're trying to do that is ADA versus Pro-WAG, and I don't mean to take us down a tangent here, but ADA is legislation that was passed in nineteen ninety-one, right? Several years ago, Pro-WAG was established, and what that gap it was intended to fill was ADA was really designed and meant for buildings and facilities, where a right-of-way has a little bit of its own set of rules. Those, some of those gray areas and details that we were really, and still are lacking detail on. But, uh, about a year and a half ago, we adopted and decided to go with Pro-WAG. It is not universally adopted yet, so there is a slight bit of risk, but we felt like the greater risk was adopting ADA and not Pro-WAG with its slightly more stringent requirements. This is a great slide here, sidewalks narrower than thirty-six inches do not provide minimum acceptable width for accessibility. ADA, it is, thirty-six inches is enough, it's enough to pass a wheelchair, you're good to go. Pro-WAG advises four foot, as you'll see in the graphic here on the left-hand side, four foot.
And that's good, that's leaning forward, right? I mean, I think we're trying to, to figure out what the best thing to do, because last thing we all want to see is, hey, man, remember when you started here at the city and you did this street? And you're about to retire and we're about to redo the street for the third time?
No.
You know, yeah, we don't want that conversation, so any which way we could find to lean forward and find the best solution for longevity.
Yes.
That'd be awesome, so, um, that's all I had, thank you.
Ms. Simpson?
Uh, thank you, can we go back to the map of the streets that are proposed in twenty twenty-three? Okay, thank you. Real quick, it's always been my understanding that when we do sidewalks, we do the mill and overlay two years later, correct?
Correct.
So, why did I have sidewalks done on Salisbury Court and sixty-six in twenty twenty-one, but they are not on the twenty twenty-three map?
Would you repeat the last part of that again? Why was it?
Why did I have sidewalks done at Salisbury Court in twenty twenty-one, but it's not on the twenty twenty-three map for a mill and overlay?
Jeff, can you help answer that one?
We, the, that, it was probably just like a previous regime or a previous team. We have been trying to stay ahead of the game, where, we're, we're kind of not in that place right now that, that is the norm, where we're two years out ahead on the concrete, and we've kind of drifted away from that. Um, I will tell you, our planning, so the, the areas in blue where we are projected to do mill and overlay, those ramps have all been brought up to compliance. I don't know that the Salisbury neighborhood, if those ramps have been addressed yet. So, that's, that triggers, the ramps have to be compliant in order to do the mill and overlay.
Okay, I would like to have this looked into because I have a very large group of constituents over there who are expecting new ones this summer.
I, I will say that area, the whole, that whole east side of town, everything east of Wadsworth.
I know.
You can throw a dart at a map and it all needs it. I will say, our, our planning is to hit as much of that. You know, we also have to spread throughout the rest of the city, and with our budget, it, we, we get what we get. But we, we will be looking, I know where you're, where you're talking about, I've, I think I've seen some of the, um, Ask Arvada complaints. We, we need to make sure our ramps are compliant, and that's probably why that one isn't on there.
Okay, great.
For this year.
I would just like to ask the team, I'd like to follow up on this particular one, okay? And, uh, thank you, otherwise, I tend to, um, on, on the other things, particularly the, the right-of-way, I would be, um, sorry, to the sidewalks right-of-way, much later in the presentation. Um, I, I tend to agree that as uncomfortable it is, as it is for cars to get in and out, that's probably going to be our, our best option, better than the other two. I would just, uh, make sure that whatever the height is, if we can adjust the height towards sedans and low-riding cars are comfortable, the last thing we want is people damaging their cars, um, getting in and out of sidewalks, which I know can happen if you're not in an SUV. And then I just caution about, um, making, uh, to the, to the last one, when people have their stuff in the right-of-way.
If I can chime in on that fact real fast?
Yes, absolutely, please.
Our standard mountable curb and gutter is four inches tall, seven inches deep for that ramp. Uh, we would like to explore the possibility of retrofitting what we've proposed in our new plans, which is an eleven-foot depth of that ramp, therefore softening that bump. Now, retrofitting that into existing situations could cause some issues, but we, if we do have the blessing to move forward on this, uh, on this alternative of the three, that's, that's one little bit that we'd be exploring.
Okay, great, I, I like that a lot, and I understand it may not work everywhere, but even in some places, it could be quite helpful. And then here, I, I just want to clarify, this is when people have brought their particular properties up onto the sidewalk. It's not within their contained yard, can, correct?
Correct, correct. What they do on their private property is obviously their business, um, as far within city planning and ordinances. Uh, but, but when their facilities or their installations start to creep into the public right-of-way is where we want to try to avoid having that be a cost of the program and, and to the community as a whole.
Okay, perfect, because if we have to take land in order to widen sidewalks, because the streets aren't necessarily wide enough, I, I can fathom that that's going to be quite expensive. For instance, I have one of those steep driveways you were talking about, and then also a retaining wall, because I live on, in the middle of Car Hill. If you were to try and come take my property, that would be an extraordinary amount of money for the city to rebuild all of that. So, just thinking about my property alone and how, as a hilly city, that has to exist everywhere, that, that concerns me quite a lot about how quickly that could add up with, uh, with people with special needs like that.
We definitely want to avoid that, both from a cost perspective, but also a time perspective.
Yes, absolutely, so, um, I, I tend to be a little bit more in favor of narrowing streets wherever possible. I understand in many parts of the city, particularly the older, that's not possible, but where it is, I, I tend to be more in favor of that, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, so I'll give you a little bit of feedback on a couple of things. I'm gonna start with the financial slides, though, um, and just note that, you know, we're in a eight to ten percent inflationary environment, and probably will be for a while, and so just to maintain that, our, our pavement funding needs to go up by a million a year, at least, you know, just to, just to not fall further behind due to inflation only, much less anything else. And the question I was gonna ask you, i- i- that's inflation in general, what's been the inflation in doing streets work and concrete work? Has that followed at about that same inflationary factor we see throughout the economy, or has it been greater or less?
On a longer-term horizon, we see five percent, and that's what we've worked with finance to start to build into most of our cost estimating for the future.
Mm-hmm, but, but just over the last three or four years, have you seen five percent over the last three or four years?
Oh, most definitely not, most definitely not.
Seen, seen higher than that, okay. When I look at, when I look at these slides, you know, increasing our streets, our pavement funding by six times, we could wish for that, I don't see any way that that can be done. We have no choice but to take an incremental approach, and to me, this becomes a prioritization problem. You know, this is, is one of, if not, if not the highest core responsibility of the city, it's one of the highest, one of the core responsibilities of the city, and we should be and, and should have been doing this all along. I think like Mr. Pfeiffer, when I came on to council, we were spending a small amount, we took a big jump, but we've kind of stayed right there. We haven't ever really, other than a couple of one-time funding exceptions, we haven't continued to put, whether we put growth to it or, or some kind of factor, and I think it's absolutely important that we start doing that, doing that right away. So, I would certainly favor the second of these two approaches to get there, even if, even if it takes longer, you know, the goal is to get there, that, you know, as soon as possible, yes, but if it took longer, but you still got there, you still get there. So, I think that's the right way to go. The other, the question I would have then also with your annual program where you're doing, you know, the concrete ahead of time and then the streets work and the ADA stuff, what kind of capacity do you have to do, oh, whether you'd call it emergency or reprioritization of areas or work? And I think about, there's, sometimes it seems like a street will be fine, and it gets really bad really quick and needs intervention. Do you still, within your program, maintain the ability to do that? And not just patch a pothole, but, but actually, you know, move something from two years from now to this year, or from five years from now to this year, as the conditions actually change year to year?
Yeah, we do, we do frequently do that now. When you say emergency work, I want to be sure to, to understand two different scenarios. We do have an on-call, say, on concrete, when, when emergencies come up, to, to be able to respond quickly without diverting, say, Jeff and Christine's five contractors that are out there.
And I think I spoke of that wrong, I didn't really mean, emergency is like a, a hole appears over the weekend and needs to be fixed. I wasn't really thinking about that, I was thinking more about on an annual basis, something degrades much more quickly than maybe you thought it might.
With the way the program is built, we do have that flexibility within our contracts to do just that, to, to, to maybe defer one street a couple of years back or a year back and push up one. But that's, that's where we get really nervous, and again, a bit of a tangent, but you can see here that we want to be very careful in communicating to the citizens exactly what year their street will be paved, because God forbid that situation happens, and then suddenly, they're waiting another two years, and are probably not too excited about that.
Right, right, so, let me move a little bit and ask you a question, just kind of about this ADA, kind of the philosophy of the ADA thing. Are you talking about, with particularly these driveway cuts and, and, and other ADA issues? Again, not when we're in there working on the streets and sidewalks anyway, but just going out and saying, all right, we're, this year, we're gonna start addressing driveway cuts, and we're just gonna go address exclusively driveway cuts throughout the neighborhood? Or are we still talking about addressing these driveway cuts in a scenario when we've got the street on the, on the plan and we're doing the corners and we're doing the driveways anyway?
It would be wherever the pavement program takes us, i.e. the condition of the pavement. We would probably limit this at least initially to just the committed neighborhoods that I outlined a couple of slides ago, where we'd be tackling one neighborhood at a time, um, at, at least at first, to try to get our feet wet and to understand the true time and cost impacts of the program.
Do, do we have any idea, or do you guys have any idea if there's a optimal percentage of expenditure on concrete and ADA, ADA issues and then pavement? Because obviously, if you spend two-thirds of the money on concrete ADA issues, you're gonna not be progressing on streets very quickly at all.
Yeah, that is, that is a concern of ours. I believe that that is very difficult to predict, as we've discussed here, the variety of neighborhoods we have, right? Rainbow Ridge, for instance, had very small, well, nonexistent sidewalk and curb ramp needs, but we did replace a lot of valley pans out there, as, as well as a bulk of the work being asphalt.
All right, okay, all right, so.
That would be ferreted out, though, in the one, three, five, ten-year plans.
Right, right, okay, I, I would encourage us to, I mean, I think it's good, we, we have to, as we build stuff, build it to ADA standards, I, I always think that was the, the, the mistake in the nineteen ninety-one ADA Act, was throwing everything into it, it should certainly apply to anything that's built. But to retroactively apply it to stuff that's there is, is, is a difficult proposition.
It's a bit of a headache technically and, and financially, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, it takes away your ability to build anything. You know, you end up, end up in decades of just trying to catch back up.
Rebuild.
Anyway, I would encourage us to, as we, as we do our own ADA work throughout the city, that we don't become so focused on doing that, that we lose track of the bigger picture here, and that we, you know, everywhere we're building something, it should absolutely be built ADA compliant, but that we just don't go and reprioritize ourselves to just addressing ADA and let everything else go, um, because I think it's important we do the other work, too. As far as these driveway cuts, I was another one, like Mr. Pfeiffer, I got my driveway cut replaced years ago on the fifty-fifty program with a driveway cut that was, that was one of those ones that feathered down to the gutter. And I think you're gonna have, I think Bob's exactly right, you're gonna have quite a issue with a number of homeowners who are gonna not be real comfortable with, um, with that. And, uh, again, it's one of those spots, I would encourage us to not, not, not be so religious about it that we cause too many problems there, that, you know, we, we'll get them next time, or, you know, kind of get it, get it as we go. If someone's getting that concrete replaced anyway, we should absolutely replace it to the, what we now know as the best way to do it, but.
And we have that built in our current systems, you know.
But, but, but as far as proactively replacing really good concrete just because it's that shape, and if, and the homeowner doesn't want it to and forcing it on him, I think, I think that's a tougher, tougher haul. You know, if a homeowner says, sure, I'm good with it, we can do it, but, but I'd be, I'd be a little bit careful about that. And I think the, the last two questions you had here were, were the, you know, the sidewalk widening plan. Obviously, it's gonna have to be some of both. I'm a little bit probably not favorable of the, you know, the, trying to force a four-foot sidewalk everywhere. I mean, my neighborhood has, I don't even know how narrow the sidewalks are, we call them one-ass wide, because if you're walking to Old Town from my house, you have to walk single file and yell at each other, you know, because you can't walk side by side at all, but, um, they're, they're even really narrow. But there's just places you're not gonna be able to fit it, and there's places that don't have probably as much sidewalk need as other places do, you know, like, I, I think of the sidewalks internal around my neighborhood that probably see not a lot of use, and you can walk in the street as easily as you can walk in the sidewalk because, because there's not any cars, and then when you're going to Old Town, you're walking to Grandview, and you, you don't even feel comfortable being on the outside foot of the sidewalk because somebody's gonna hit you with their mirror. So, not every area is the same, and again, I would encourage us to be flexible and, and, and not just push four-foot-wide sidewalks in places where it has really limited value, because obviously, this is really, really, really expensive to take good sidewalk in an area that maybe there's no pedestrian issues and, and make it into four-foot sidewalk, just because seems like a really expensive proposition, so.
It, it really is, um, I think that some, uh, some work with our ADA coordinator would be important on that, on walking the thin line between, obviously, staying within the good graces of the DOJ and doing the right thing for our community versus a significant cost.
Yeah, yeah, nope, exactly. Um, and then the last one, you know, where private property has, you know, worked its way into the road right-of-way. Honestly, I don't really have too much problem with the, with the city asking of the homeowners to deal with their own stuff that they've put into the right-of-way, realizing that some of these things like, you know, fences on corners and whatnot, that, it might have been four homeowners back who actually did it, and the poor guy who's living there now is faced with it, and, and I think, again, it's a spot we need to be flexible, there are certainly plenty of people in our community who don't have any ability to deal with that either by themselves or the financial ability to hire somebody to do it, but if the corner's gotta be done, maybe there are times when we might need to do it. So, I, I guess I would just encourage us to be flexible, I think, um, I think that's probably the good neighbor policy on that one, so. That's all, that's all I've got.
Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. So, could you go back to the neighborhood concept slide? So, I'm just trying to catch, you, you went that pretty quick, so I just want to make sure I've got an understanding of it. So, you, I see twenty twenty-three for the first one on here, right? Which is, what's that, North? North Hareberry Hill, but I didn't see that on the twenty twenty-three map, did I miss something? Did I miss something? Jeff, why don't you jump in here, is that?
Is that what that purple is?
Um, it should, so it's, it's the area right off of Seventy-second and Vance, and it's... I'm actually still working on this map, too.
Okay.
But it is, it is our proposed neighborhood four twenty-three, Harekberry neighborhood.
Great.
This, this map is, we're still ironing out our twenty twenty-three plan, like, in completion. So there, there'll be more added to it.
Well, and, and just, I have a question on that, too, then, I guess.
So actually, on this, there's, there's still actu- they, they're still working on the concrete, that's why it's labeled as curb ramps, but that will be the committed, that will be the committed pavement.
Okay.
That, that will be part of it.
Right. So, I mean, I guess my, my concern is, is, I'll just start with this, you know, when I, when I'm talking to my constituents, you know, one of the first things that come up is road conditions and how bad they are. And it, and it often is tied to this kind of perception in certain parts of the city, that they're the forgotten part of the city.
Yes.
And I'm sure you're familiar with what I'm talking about and that perception. And so I guess, and I, I totally get with, you know, efficiency and how, how you go about planning road improvements, but I, I also, you know, I look at, you know, for my district, District One, it's not till twenty twenty-six that the area that I'm thinking about, where I hear a lot, in the northeast part, Lake Arbor and also Far Horizons is, is an area. And, and I just wonder if there is, if there's a way to balance the efficiency with also equity? Because I think, you know, that perception of forgottenness is going to continue, even with the plan that you've laid out. And so I'm just, I'm concerned about that and what I hear from my constituents, and for me to tell them, well, we're not going to do anything until twenty twenty-six is, is a long way off for them to hear.
If you, can you go back to the twenty twenty-three?
If I can jump in with a little bit of information on that as well, one of the reasons that we have put some of those plans off to twenty twenty-six is as we are evaluating the one-build plan for the city, we have waterline improvements planned in the Far Horizons neighborhood between now and twenty twenty-six, so we want to make sure that we get the waterline, the sewer line, the storm done before we pave.
Okay, I think that makes total sense, and I guess my ask to follow up on that is, do we have, or are we in the process of developing a communication tool for the public to really understand? They can just click on a map, here's where I live, and here's the plan for my area?
It, it's, right now, we're not in a place where we could really make those kind of promises, I guess.
You could do estimated, right?
Definitely do estimated, and just one other point I want to make, just, just because of, because it says it's in the committed neighborhood map, that's not the only areas that are, that we're going to do a mill and overlay that year, it's just that, that's just the neighborhood selected for, for that committed neighborhood. But as you can see on this map, we're doing mill and overlay in a lot of different areas besides that committed neighborhood.
Right, but I, you know, you can understand, just looking at the twenty-three, twenty twenty-three proposed treatments, my district is pretty bare, and so I'm going to hear about it, right? So I'm just asking, and, and I understand the approach, but if, if there's any more you can do on the equity end, I would really appreciate that earlier, sooner.
Yep.
But at the same time, we need to be better at communicating to constituents what the plan is for their neighborhood, because they have no clue, and again, they think they've been forgotten, and that's been, that's been a history of this, of, you know, in the city, that, and that's what's been built up over time.
And I, I fully understand the east side of town has definitely been neglected, it's some of the worst streets in town. I fully understand that, and we're gonna, it, it's going to still take a few years because of budget, but we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get there.
Great, well, thank you, and, and again, like I said, let's, let's try to come up with a really good communication tool so that residents can easily access it and have at least an idea of what the future holds for them.
Can I elaborate a little bit on that, too, if you don't mind?
Are you asking me to?
Yeah, no, if I could.
Oh, yeah, please.
So the, the initial perspective is here, and we toyed around with a lot of different philosophies when it comes to those committed neighborhoods. First and foremost, we need to go where the bad pavement is, right? That's the first paradigm we're trying to view this through. We also toyed around with the idea of looking at it through the paradigm of, of income throughout the city. Where we ended up settling on, at least about six months ago, when we started to lay this out, was covering all districts for you all, to, to understanding that our citizens and our residents want that equity throughout the city. Now, we have made some changes of, over this, over the last month or so, given, say, the input that Jenny provided as well. So we may have strayed slightly from that, but that was our original intent. So over the next ten years, you know, everyone would see about two and a half neighborhoods covered within their district. And then, as far as the communication goes, we, we fully acknowledge that we can definitely up our game as far as communication goes around this program and in others. Not only are we trying to implement those with Katie, our, our communications coordinator, but we're really looking forward to a website update here in the near future and really starting to be more proactive and getting better at communication. At a minimum, the absolute minimum of outlining for our residents what these programs are, and also, for our own benefit and strife in the field, what they're not. So we fully understand those needs for communication and really look forward to the future of getting better at that.
Great, thank you. I guess I'll move on to my questions or comments about funding. So I, I assume, if I gather right, that we're going to be having another workshop in the future on funding, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess one thing I would like to, if it's not already on that agenda item, is for us to think about something similar to the Denver ballot measure that was just passed for sidewalks, setting up an enterprise fund that then property pays a fee into that fund on an annual basis to cover sidewalks and, and complete that much faster. So I'd love to just be able to look at that as an option.
Understood, and we view this as a, as a learning experience to see what they've gone through to get that on the ballot, let alone what they're going to do to execute that.
Excellent.
Councilmember Mormon, I'd also add that that's part of the financial resilience, resiliency work that we'll be doing as far as opportunities for additional revenue. So that is on the plan, because when you put an issue out for that, there's other areas needing funding, so we just want to be mindful that council is considering all the needs and options.
Great, thank you. And I also assume that we'll, we'll be looking at federal funding, of course, with what's available through the bipartisan infrastructure bill and things like that.
Stephen Padilla is already starting to look into that for us, and then, of course, John Furuzi's a great resources as well.
Excellent, great. I guess the, the only comments I had then on those questions that you had raised, if you want to go... Okay, so the, the driveway cuts, I, I agree that this would be, it seems like the most, least-cost approach and, and to get the, the job done. I guess my, my one comment on this and what's been discussed so far is, you know, while a neighborhood or a street, a sidewalk, and that relates to the sidewalk slide as well, may not, at the current time, you know, see the need that you need for feet, but that, that may be because it's inaccessible, and so that there's no one there saying, I need this, because they've realized, I can't live here, right?
Yeah.
Based on how it's built, so I think that's important to keep in mind. It's just, you know, the, the goal is accessibility, and, and the need may not be perceived because it is inaccessible. And, and so, yeah, I mean, I would say, let's, let's try to do what, what we can in that area as well, you know, as, along with balancing the costs, of course, too.
Yeah, I completely agree, we really believe that this touches us all. I'm thirty-nine years old, pretty mobile, I, I don't so much have a need here, but someday I'll be on a walker. I'll be seventy-two years old and really wish that I had this down my street.
And then was there another question? Oh, the property, yes. So, yeah, I, I think that in most cases, the property owner, if they're encroaching on, on the, our right-of-way, then, then they should be paying for those changes. Thanks. Ms. Smith?
Last but not least.
Yes, I support the man, manable gutter one, curb and gutter, and the narrow streets, and citizens paying, they're paying if they need to, with just the caveat that if it is a homeowner that is, you know, an older adult or disabled adult, fixed income situation, maybe looking at a way that we set aside at least some sort of chunk to help supplement if they can't afford it.
Understood.
And then my shameless plug of untouched marijuana money that we could use for helping the funding of this.
Mr. Pfeiffer, you want another bite at the apple?
I do, she just came back from Jamaica, so I could see the marijuana comment, it was conveniently for her. Yaman. Yeah, I just wanted to, so the four-foot, you know, sidewalks at the streets, and, and I'm just, I think maybe it's already implied, but maybe when we do these driveways, like Mr. Marriott was saying, is we only look at these driveways only when we're redoing the street versus just, I don't want to do the temporary fix and then five years later come back to the street and then widen the same sidewalk he just fixed five years earlier. Because I know some of these sidewalks, I, I at least can name a couple of houses I lived where they're stamped. I loved when the sidewalk was stamped, because it shows who did it and then what year, and you're like, man, this concrete's still, it's like twenty-five years old and it's not a crack in it. I'd hate for us to just tear stuff up five years later when you know it can last longer if the quality's there. So my recommendation would be, is when you're looking at a street, then that's when you should deal with the driveways and the why, do it all at one time, don't, I know it within compliance and all that stuff, but, man, the dollar is what worries me, is we're just not going to have the dollars. So look at a complete street versus spitting falling streets as best as you can.
Correct, and maybe I wasn't clear on that before, my apologies. Our intent here is, some of these larger-scale ADA efforts are intended for those committed neighborhoods that we discussed a few minutes ago.
Complete streets.
And it's going to be where we go with the pavement.
Yeah, not just like some random, that you're not going to touch the, the, the street itself for ten years.
It's also important to advise, too, that these are not going to be, we are not going to be going into the higher priority areas of ADA compliance, per the transition plan, say, schools and City Hall and such. It'll be where the pavement needs us, because this is the pavement program.
And I agree with what Mr. Mormon said about, you know, we don't know about the need because it's an accessible neighborhood. So it's also quality of life, just in general. I think when we invest like this, we're invest, investing in a very micro-scale neighborhood, and, and this is probably the most visible asset to a, a person. And that quality of life can open up new doors and new people and diversity of our citizens. So just, I know it, there's a lot of challenges, but I also think there's a lot of positive upsides to it. So the other thing is, is maybe it's, it's time that we, the council's changed so much, and it could change again in a year, so Godspeed to rest of the staff. But treatment education, we've never talked about, I don't think this council, other than maybe, maybe some of us, I'm not sure, but when you went through the different treatment types, and I think Don did it one time, where why you do a slurry versus a chip and mill and why you do, that might be something we may want to do again. Yeah, because, because there's preservation in the asset management with those different techniques, and I think the council here would benefit to see, like, you know, why I started getting worried about Candace was because I thought it said, I thought it said chip seal, not, not crack seal, so I was like, what the? And then, that's why I can't see the F word anymore, but that, you know, a, a crack seal is very, you're going to get much more life out of something that's very inexpensive to do. So even though the map is colored, it might be misunderstood, the level of effort and the amount of money associated to it, versus a mill and overlay and possibly a reconstruction is, is the extreme opposite. The other thing is, is so maybe education, but I'd also put that education on a website that talks about how the streets are done. And, and I would also, when you get into neighborhoods, it would be super cool if you can kind of show, hey, this is my neighborhood, this is what we would like to do with it, and these are the things that could be applied to your neighborhood. Chip sealed, and you click on it, and it's like, oh, this is what a chip seal is. And just the more data and information and interaction somebody can be with our website will be better educated. So when you have those, those challenging, crucial conversations with that neighbor, maybe they did visit the website because we sent down a meller, and they kind of got educated before you knocked on the door and they stripped your head off, right?
I think Rob would prefer that, yeah.
Yeah, send the inspector in or the cop, you know, one of the two, right? But maybe that's a suggestion, so not only give the council the different treatment types and why we do them and how you get that P Q I and, and how it impacts PCI and all that other things of the different treatments might help this council as well as our education, and get it on our website. So that might help, because this is going to be a wash and rinse and repeat in a year or two, maybe?
Yep.
With the council, so you may need to kind of plan on that.
We definitely have the materials and the expertise for that, for sure.
Yeah, and just keep it fresh and accessible. And then the other thing is, is, you know, I, I had the pleasure of going out with Don, when was that? When we went out here, back here, and I visited, the innovative approach that the streets team is doing is by assessing the street at the time, like you course a sample to see if you can, and you do first mill a little bit to see, and then you can decide if you could have to do another inch, or I, I can't remember the whole process, but you were on-the-fly kind of engineering, and you got more streets done by doing that approach, which was very innovative. I'm not sure the council fully understands how you stretched the dollar that you did in that situation. I think I was the only one available to go out and do it, and I learned a lot off of that. And, and learned about also the weight of the trash trucks out there, because I think there was already shoving happening in the road, and it was fresh, and the trash trucks were already moving this asphalt. So I, I think if we could somehow tie a visit again on that with councils, and see if we can get a few more folks, because I think that is something you learn when you go out boots on the ground, and it is super cool that you're that innovative to do on-the-fly value engineering in a way.
We love field trips, let's do it.
Alright, I'll do it again, I, I had a blast, so I'd encourage council to do that. I think it was, it was really cool, because they got, I don't know what it was, I don't know if anyone can answer, but I think it got like several more blocks in the same neighborhood, because if you did the full reconstruction, you've been stuck to, say, two blocks, but you ended up doing, because of this value engineering, you ended up doing triple that, it was super cool.
That's, that's still our approach, and it always is, even if we have something scheduled as a reconstruct, if we get in there and start milling and see that that's not necessary, we absolutely pull back and save where we can, because that, that is our plan and our approach to, you know, we, we've had other roads where it was scheduled for a three-inch overlay, our, our asphalt inspector is really good, he'll call us up and say, hey, we, we can switch this to a two-inch, and it, it just saves a lot of money, but, but that is our approach.
Yeah, and, and I'd like to add, I think if I recall correctly, even the, the contractor doesn't lose out, they just get more work, they still get this total contract value, it's just done a little bit differently, so it's a win-win. Our citizens win, we still stay within the contract's budget, and you got to deliver more.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, so a great job. And then the last comment I wanted to make on my second bite at the apple was, look, equity is, I think the best you can do is just get it across as many parts of the districts as you can and get it out there, and, and guess what? It will never be right, and I understand that, I'm sure council appear understands it. No matter which streets you pick and what you do, it will never be perfect, because they all suck, and you're just behind, I shouldn't say they all do, that was way too harsh, a lot of them are in disrepair, and it's hard to get ahead of that ball when you're already behind it. And without additional funding and getting that going, you're always just, it, it's just, you're never going to get to a happy place. So I think our challenge will be is continue to prepare us for that discussion in the fall, so we can make a sound decision on how we're going to do this funding. I mean, we just dealt with water and utilities and stuff, that's so hard to come off the heels of that and then ask for this. But, you know, John is right, some of our core business, this is one of the, you know, between police, I think it's water, utilities and roads, I think is what we always refer to, I look to John, because he's usually the one about just the core business. This is it, and so we need to pay attention to it, so I think you do the best you can. And, and I think what informs, going all the way back to treatment education, that's what informs this council to understand why you did certain neighborhoods, you did, because the lifts could be heavier and it's not within budget, and then understanding those treatment types will help us understand what you did. So, sorry, thanks for the long bite at the apple, but.
Are you finished?
I am, thank you, Mayor Proton Jones.
You're welcome. Well, first of all, thank you, it was really actually, I like, I like the approach, I like the team approach to kind of helping us think about this and, and educating us on this. And when I was running for council in twenty fifteen, I was often asked, well, are you a Democrat or a Republican? And my response was always, I've never met a bad road or a pothole that cared. And I think that's the approach that we have to take on this, is that it's not about, you know, politics, it's about providing these core services to the, to our customers, which are the residents. So thank you for, for this, and these, these are hard conversations to have. I did have, I just want to follow up on the, on this slide, the committed neighborhood concept, because I didn't understand it at first, but I think as we've talked through it, I've gotten, I've educated myself more. as we've talked through it, I've gotten, I've educated myself more. But just to be clear, so the the twenty twenty-three area, I'm gonna get that I understand that this is still being worked out. But um, just wanna reiterate that that doesn't mean that there's not other work going on in other places.
Correct.
Okay.
This, that neighborhood, for instance, in twenty twenty-three, we intend to go in and reconstruct that asphalt because it has fallen, if you don't mind me shuffling around a moment, it has fallen, there we go, bottom left-hand corner. That road has likely fallen into the failed category.
Right.
To where no treatment will help it. I I mean, it will, from an appearance perspective, one year, maybe two, but then it it's throwing bad money or good money after bad. So the intent there is to reconstruct and with the support of council through the comments that you've made today and funding, uh, we intend to rectify driveways in that neighborhood and sidewalk within that neighborhood to really try to get as close to a complete street as possible.
Okay, so it's a holistic approach to take into consideration those other questions that you asked that I'll get to as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, that, thank you for that uh explanation on that. And I I think that's, again, you know, it it it, someone may look at this and say, twenty thirty-two. But I think to Mr. Pfeiffer's comments, there needs to be a lot of education and a lot of communication a around really what does this mean? Um, so with regard to uh the the questions on the the curb cuts. So I, too, am one who has a curb cut. But I I took out really brand-new concrete when I moved into my house in twenty fifteen and did it. But I have the benefit of a tree lawn.
Mm-hmm.
So I have my driveway, a full sidewalk that I think is three feet. Um, and then where the sidewalk stops, I've got this tree lawn. Um, and and have a different experience where I really still do have a sidewalk um that is passable. So um, obviously, all of that's taken into consideration as you're going into these neighborhoods and looking at all of the different, I'm gonna go back to what Ms. Gillis says or said, one size does not fit all.
Correct.
So there's this kind of open-mindedness, which I think you've heard from others, that we've gotta take as we approach this question.
For the sake of brevity, we we skipped on all the forms and factors that that in front of someone's front edge may be present. But in that case, like all cases, are we ADA compliant? If we are, there's probably really no need whatsoever for any work there.
Okay. Um, so again, I think from that perspective, I think we just, we're thoughtful.
Our heartache really becomes where there's attached sidewalks, obviously.
Yes. Um, with regard to the right of way, or I'm sorry, the next question was the streets. This is a hard one, um, because I think it it impacts people and experiences on streets either way. Um, and uh, so I think, again, going back to one size does not fit all, I think we have to, again, just be thoughtful as we go down, what what's going to be best best outcome for that street? Um, and uh, not try to force a square peg into a round hole with regard to, it's gotta look a certain way. With regards to the right of way issues, I would agree that if if a homeowner has encroached our right of way, that it should be their responsibility to to either bring it back to the city specs or to pay for whatever reconstruction they need to do in a fence or whatever it might be. Um, are those the things that you needed feedback on?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I don't think there are any other questions unless Mr. Pfeiffer has any more. Um, did you get the direction and feedback that you were looking for tonight?
Yes, thank you very much, council. Uh, I do wanna add, A, thank you for the input. We really do appreciate it. It definitely gives us a point on the compass to to get going on. We also appreciate the understanding and the support on this. You guys have granted another position. And as Bob Pfeiffer or Mr. Pfeiffer had outlined, um, we're on some significant timetables here, timelines, right? Um, we, it's taken us a long time to get into this situation and it's gonna take us a bit to get out. So appreciate the patience. And uh, we're very passionate about this. We do believe that it's a core service that that everyone uses, knows and and really notices when it's not the way they like it. So we look forward to the future. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate the the workshop and the education. Ms. Gillis?
I just wanna second that. Thank you for the engagement tonight. Wow. I mean, this was a hearty discussion and you were all providing your input. Really appreciate that. We'll have more in the weekly to address some of the questions. And we have some more information as far as how much we've spent and where that money came from to address some of the comments this evening. And also, just as a reminder, back in twenty sixteen, just to point out, this is a uphill climb in twenty sixteen. It's difficult for our residents to understand the cost and the amount of funding that it's gonna take to get to where we need to be. So it, more conversation to come on that.
Yep. Great. Thank you. We are adjourned.